Well, good afternoon colleagues. Welcome to the second of our series of meetings this week. I'm looking at this agenda and I'm willing to predict a shorter meeting than we'll have tomorrow night. I'm going to guess before dinner we're going to be through this agenda. Dinner break for anyone watching at home is at 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. There are none. So today, I am so pleased to join all of you in welcoming Anne Moniz to sing our national anthem. Anne is a graduate of the Ontario Institute of Audio Recording Technology and there she has learned skills such as basic audio recording techniques and music production. She's now utilizing these skills by creating her own media and music. In this summer, she will be independently releasing a debut EP with her new band Nimwe. When Anne isn't recording, she's volunteering her time producing audio for community theater. Which theater?
Palace Theatre.
Palace. I saw Star Wars there in '77. That was great. This year, Anne was nominated for a 2017 Jack Richardson London Music Award in Contemporary Singer-Songwriting category. That was a fantastic music week here in London. Anne is having an upcoming free Mother's Day event at the Soho Bar &amp; Grill on Saturday, May the 13th and it's from 2:00 to 5:00. Items or money donated for this event will go to my sister's place. That's amazing. Thank you very much, Anne, for being here today and colleagues if you could please join me for the singing of the national anthem.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. Tony Stuart une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you very much.
Absolutely incredible. Thank you so much. There is so much music talent here in our city and I think it's just amazing that people can come and share that with all of us. Working our way through the agenda, there are no recognitions today so that should help us get to the end of the meeting a little bit sooner and there is no information of confidential nature to be considered in public. So I'd look for a motion to go in camera. Moved by councillor Usher. It'll be up on screen in a moment. Seconded by councillor Park. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll call the question in a moment. For anyone watching from home, we will be no later than 5:15 and I don't think we'll be anywhere near that length of time. We'll get back to public session as soon as we can. So that's been moved by councillor Usher on screen and seconded by councillor Morgan. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Let's call the question. We are voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries. 12 to 0.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, we'll move through the agenda. It is about a quarter to five now. We'll look for a motion for confirmation and signing of the minutes of the 12th and 13th meetings held on April 18th and 21st, 2017, respectively, and also...
Last night.
Last nights as well. Any speakers? Okay, moved by Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Park. There are no speakers, so let's call the question. We are voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries. 12 to zero.
Okay, colleagues, communications and petitions. I believe there's just the one. This is forwarded to the, this is, sorry, pertaining to the fourth report of the Trees and Forest Advisory Committee. So we want to refer that to clause 10 of the eighth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. That'll come up on screen in a moment. That's been moved by Counselor Park, seconded by Counselor Helmer. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries. 13 to zero.
We're moving right along. We're into reports. Eighth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Chair Park.
Thank you. I'll put all items on the floor with exception of item 15 and anything else colleagues would like pulled.
So we'll deal with 15 separately. Any other items? Any other clauses? Counselor Usher?
I'd just like to make, I'd ju- I'd just like to make a comment on four.
Counselor Morgan?
13.
13. So we'll pull 13 and 15?
Thank you, and I know that Counselor Turner would like to speak to the infill, which was 12.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, your worship. Am I speaking at the right time?
That's what you would say if we were dealing with that clause. Okay, so Counselor Usher for clause four.
Sometimes. Mr. Chair, I just want to bring this to the attention of council because this is, from our perspective, it's a very important subject because we've heard about it for years. And it follows, it's going to be a public participation meeting and it follows a meeting that the mayor and I went to in November. And there's been lots of complaints about the orders from the industrial area south of the 401. I say south of the 401 because those are the people that did the effects of what we call the Shaver, Brooklyn neighborhood. So I just wanted to bring your attention to this and Mr. Stanford will be preparing a report subsequent to that for council. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for flagging that. Any other speakers on any of the clauses that are on the floor now? Counselor Turner?
Thank you. I just realized now, so my apologies, I went through the, my recusals and that was another one that I need to pull for number four if I could please.
Okay, no, that's fine. We'll deal with that separately. If we could just sort of remove the movers' motion, then we'll change the wording. So we want to deal with four separately. Ms. Westlake-Power. Any other speakers? Counselor Morgan?
I'll take the opportunity to speak while that change is being made. I want to speak on number nine, which is a property located at Hawthorne Road in my ward. It's a rezoning and I'm glad to see the committee supporting that. It's going to allow for a hungry butcher and bake shop to come into the neighborhood. And the only complaint I received about that was it's right beside a school and some of the parents were worried about having to pass a bake shop each and every day, twice a day, on the way to school. But no, in all seriousness, I think it's going to be a great addition to, in the heart of a community and it's nice to see some of those expansions happening out into my part of the city and not always just Old East Village, which seems to get all of the new startups and expansions. So I think it'll be a great addition to the community, so.
And colleagues, if you're ever in the area, it used to be a video rental business. And so I know you're asking yourselves where you'll rent your movies, but that's maybe a problem for another day. Okay, so let's call the question on the clauses before us. Chair, are you good with that? This is one to 12 excluding four.
I am, although I do know my colleague would like to speak on number 12.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to thank certainly the planning committee and planning staff for putting together the low-rise residential development guidelines. I think this has been about 18 months in the works and it's quite evident the amount of work that's been done to try and find a happy space in terms of the, addressing the infill and intensification pressures that will be seen as, especially as we have a 45% intensification target within the city. This speaks nicely to how to approach harmonized development within the transit area within the city, so pretty much most of the built area of the city. And I watched with great interest from afar as this was discussed last week and I'm very glad that the committee passed this unanimously and I'm glad to see your support as well. So, thank you.
Other speakers? Deputy Mayor Hubert?
On the same matter, and I spoke about this when it did come forward, I guess I'm of two minds on it. I appreciate some of the compromises here, but I'm also concerned that we're getting increasingly prescriptive and we're making it more and more difficult for innovative architectural design to come forward. And I want, we want to encourage that kind of innovation. I know that in Ward Eight, the area that I represent, there's areas that are ripe, where there was large lots and small houses back in the 50s and early parts of the 60s. And I know that this is of concern, but also I'm concerned that people are able to build to today's standards and so while I will be supporting these, I also am hearing from members of the building community about time that it takes and sort of the very general subjective nature of what is fitting into the character. What does that mean? And what's one person's character is not necessarily another person's desire. And so I guess it's a cautionary word because in many cases, initially it looks, ooh, that's challenging and then, you know, six months, eight months, it actually blends into the character and brings a little bit of variety, certainly in some neighborhoods that are very, very consistent. So it's a balanced view and I hope we have that and I certainly hope staff, as they administer it, have that balanced view and we don't become unreasonably obstructionist in helping to get things where it's zoned and people are getting to site plan and getting their building permits.
Counselor Helmer? Anyone else?
Two brief comments. First on number 12, I think we've got a good balance there and I'm glad to see that it's focused in on the primary transit area. Ward four is almost entirely inside the primary transit area. Obviously not all wards are and I think this is a good way of managing the pressures on some of the older built-out areas of the city as we see intensification happening without having the same rules applied to the entire city. And I think that's a good balance and I think we'll see how it goes as Deputy Mayor Hubert was referencing to make sure we're striking the right balance there. I think it's a good step forward. Number 14, I also want to speak at that. This is obviously a hugely important project in my ward redevelopment of a heritage factory into apartment buildings. The contamination part is an important first step in cleaning that site up and putting it to good use in the future and I hope my colleagues will support that brownfield grant.
Okay, I have no additional speakers. So let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries. 13 to zero.
Thank you, and I'll put item number four on the floor noting that Counselor Turner has declared conflict.
Okay. Clause four, anyone? Bueller? Okay, let's call the question once that's moved.
Closing the vote and the motion carries. 12 with one recuse.
And item number 13, we'll put on the floor. It's the results from the public engagement with regard to the community improvement plan incentives. It was a year, I believe it was a year-long review. I'll look to Mr. Fleming to correct me if I'm wrong. There's a lot of good work that was done in this, funding the SoHo Community Improvement Plan, which has been unfunded for a very long time, which now I hope to see some use coming forward on that and I'll leave it up to my colleagues to debate this further.
Counselor Morgan? Anyone else?
Thank you, colleagues. So first off, I want to echo what Counselor Park said and commend staff on the extensive work of reviewing the CIP programs and engaging the public on them. And I think there are a lot of common sense changes to the programs. That being said, there is one area that I have concern and that's in Appendix A, which is the initial program indicators and measures to be reviewed between, throughout 2017. And I understand that these are initial and I understand that they're going to be reviewed. But I have to say, I was disappointed when I saw the types of indicators that we were going to use for a number of these programs. In the residential DC grant indicators, one of them is that a downtown population would be sufficient to support a grocery store. I'm not sure that that is an indicator of the goal of our incentive programs. I mean, that's great if it happens when the population reaches a certain point and at some point a business will decide that the population reaches the threshold, but in no means does that mean we've achieved success with our community improvement plan because I'm not sure that a grocery store is the end goal. Even some of the metrics that I think are fine to report on, like the number of residential construction units in a five-year consecutive period, the percentage of population increase over a five-year period, that, those are good measurement tools to see how it's progressing. But I'm not convinced that those are indicators of the success of the program because I think we need to articulately define the goals that we want to achieve with our granting and incentive programs downtown. And I don't think it's just about population. I think population is one step in the indicator. I think it's about growing that tax base downtown, growing the value of the assessment downtown, strengthening the economy of downtown by putting people in it. And so measuring just population as a proxy is fine, but I would like to see us as we review these indicators, dig a little deeper into the actual goals of these programs from an economics perspective and start to report on and use some of that data. And I know through the work that's being done downtown, a lot of that stuff is being collected. I would just like to see those incorporated and tied into our incentive programs in some way as we look into the indicators and measures. So I'm not going to make any changes because I recognize that the indicator of program measures are, these are the initial ones and they're under review, but I would hope that staff would consider some of those items and I'll certainly be, as we go through the review period, looking for us to move in that sort of direction so that we can truly have incentive programs that are lining up with clear goals for the downtown. And I think those goals are more than just individual people. It's about what those individual people do when they're downtown, spending money, living there, and energizing the economy. So those are my comments on the report. I think in general, a good report, but I'd like to see those changes in the future.
Other speakers? Counselor Helmer?
Excellent work on a difficult issue and I'm glad to see that we've managed to deal with some of the financial concerns about the incentive programs where you can have grants coming in and need to have a reserve fund to buffer that and, you know, the unexpected nature of how fast they could come in and you could have a lot of buildings coming in at once. Certainly understand the problem financial, from a financial perspective. And I'm glad we've been able to solve it without making the programs worse. In fact, the programs are getting better. And I don't want it to go by without noting that it says we're going to save $620,000 a year, operating savings, $620,000, and $6 million in one-time savings from making these changes. And we're going to make the programs better. So, you know, like the forgivable loans are coming back for upgrade to building code, for example. That was a hugely successful and important program in Ward Four. I'm really excited to see that that's coming back and that the levels for some of these loan programs and the forgivable loan programs are increasing so that you can, you can get a little bit more done. The cost of these projects has obviously gone up since those programs were initially started. So I think the review has actually helped us get to a much better place, both financially and actually from a program perspective. And that's quite an accomplishment. I didn't want it to go by without pointing that I think our planning staff and our finance staff in particular have done a great job in trying to figure out how to fix this problem and by not giving the money out all at once, out on the front end. And by not giving the money out all at once, out on the front end, we're using those savings to, you know, trim the cost of the program, deal with the financial risk, and then actually keep the good programs going and make some of those programs even better. So I think it's very well done, and I'm looking forward to seeing some caps on the industrial side, where I think we've been a bit generous in the past, and it's not really meeting the needs, so.
Other speakers? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to zero.
And I'll put item fifteen on the floor, which will be familiar to Council. Brownfield incentive application for properties at one hundred Fullerton Street, four seventy five to five oh one Talbot Street, and ninety-three to ninety-five Dufferin Avenue.
Sir, speakers left?
Counselor Turner and then Helmer were interested.
I beg your pardon? Counselor Turner? And then Counselor Helmer? Others?
Thank you, Your Worship. So we talked about this at length a little while ago, and it's come back. I'm not going to belabor the point. I think one of, when we take a look at the Brownfield CIP, takes a look at the criteria that are required, that we need to consider. It's a prerogative of council. It's not a grant by right, just by having developed on a Brownfield site. There's two considerations in here, that D, financially supporting the proposal is considered to be both cost-effective for the city and in the public interest, and the second is E, the incentives are considered necessary to make the remediation and redevelopment on the subject property feasible. As presented to us before, when discussing these CIPs, it's a question of but for, would that proposal be built but for the grant? And prior to the application for the grant, all indications where this was full steam ahead, this is but a percentage of the entire project. For me, I don't see this as necessary in order to make the project go forward, and that's the test that we're put in. I fully expect that there would be a differing of opinion on that, but nonetheless, each time one of these comes forward, it's a case-by-case basis. It's not a precedent situation. Just because somebody previous had received that grant does not compel us to do it again. So I'll be voting against this, and I would urge my colleagues too as well.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Helmer? Anyone else?
Thank you. I tried an amendment at committee, and I'm going to try it again here at council. And the amendment that I suggested was to change the amount from two million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand and seven dollars to two million five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. The difference there is about two hundred and seven thousand dollars. The reason I'm suggesting that we reduce it is we just approved the Brownfield grant for the McCormick site. The cost per ton for removing the soil in all these pieces was fifty-seven dollars a ton. The cost for this particular project, and it's a different site, it's downtown, it's constrained, there's some differences there, is sixty-five dollars a ton. Fifty-seven dollars versus sixty-five. So I took the eight dollars difference between those two, and I said, let's knock that off the top of the grant. I think what this does is it puts an incentive for the developer to use the lower-cost landfill for disposal whenever it's possible. There's basically two options for getting rid of this contaminated soil. One is our own landfill, which there's some capacity restrictions about how fast they could accept it, and it costs maybe thirty-one dollars a ton to do that part. Or you could take it to the private landfill in Dorchester, which obviously farther away and not owned by the City of London, and the cost there could be thirty-five dollars a ton, and there's really no concerns about the speed at which you could dispose, but they can take everything you want to send, right? So it's easier, frankly, to send it to Dorchester, to not city-owned landfill, where we would not receive the tipping fees, right? When it goes to our landfill, we get the money back. When it goes to our landfill, it's going to the closest possible spot within our city boundaries. Our waste is going to our landfill, right? So I think that putting that incentive in there is very smart. There's really just a four-dollar difference there in terms of the Dorchester cost and the City of London cost, but I do think it's important that we, we don't just say, here's two-point-seven million. Because my experience, if you give two-point-seven-million-dollar grant to cover a cost like this, that two-point-seven million dollars can be spent. If I can take it to Dorchester, and it's always going to be available to take the waste, probably will if I have the budget to do that. And so I think if we put the little constraint on the budget, it's more likely that it's going to end up in our landfill, which I think is a more environmentally responsible thing to do, it's the cheaper thing to do, and we get that money back. So I would suggest my colleagues support that amendment, and I'll put it on the floor.
And Counselor, we're just going to pause for a moment. The clerk and deputy clerk are just having a conversation about whether or not they would recommend that that be seen as an amendment or contrary to the motion coming out of committee. Do you have, if you come to some decision point?
I believe it's contrary.
Okay. If you could say that on a mic for folks at home.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe that my advice is that it would be contrary, because Part I and II below A specify how they came up with that numbers, so I think because it's that specific, that it would be contrary.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll call that separately. If it's defeated, then we'll open up the opportunity for Counselor Helmer to bring forward this amendment. Okay. So I have Counselor Van Holst and Deputy Mayor Hubert.
Thank you. Through the Chair, could we have staff just speak to the limitations of the delivery of soils that Counselor Helmer referred to?
Mr. Fleming, you look like you want a longer question.
Your Worship, I just need a little bit of clarity on the limitations. Is it the comparison of the cost between the two Brownfield applications, or is there another perspective that I'm answering?
So the, his suggestion, which is in one nice way, is if the dirt comes to our landfill, then we get paid the tipping fees, and we make some money, which is a thing that I like. However, I'm told that there's some limitations as to how much or how quickly they can bring it, and I don't want that to be onerous on the process. If this is going to set something back a long ways, then we probably shouldn't do that.
So, and Mr. Fleming, I see that Mr. Stanford is here as well, and so why don't we go to Mr. Fleming and then Mr. Stanford?
Thank you, Your Worship. The first thing I want to make clear is that the grant calculation that we're talking about would be what I would consider an up-to amount. So in other words, council is approving an amount up to this level, but the actual cost is what will be paid by way of a grant. So we'll be looking for all receipts and documentation, and we'll understand what the true costs were, and that's what the grant amount will be. So if it's less than this, that's what would be paid by way of grant. In terms of the tipping or the removal, disposal of contaminated soils at the City of London landfill versus others, the applicant gave a fairly lengthy presentation and indicated that, given the timing of the development and the amount of soil that would have to be removed to prevent delays on-site in excavation, is substantial, and they've had conversations with representatives that deal with this kind of disposal on a regular basis, and feel that the W-12A landfill site would not be able to accommodate all of the contaminated soils at once, that it would be too much volume, and that have to go to other sites, likely, in order to keep their development moving. So there will be, as they've described it, a need to go to other landfill sites, which have a higher tipping fee. But they did also make it clear that they will go to the city's landfill site as much as possible. That will be their priority, and that will be their first choice for disposing of the soils.
Mr. Stanford, anything to add?
Through your worship, we've had some preliminary conversations, and as we get closer to the construction of this, we will be quite prepared to take as much as we can, but as Mr. Fleming has pointed out, we do have some limitations with how we're set up right now, because we're traditionally handling, of course, garbage versus what we're bringing in here, which would be a lot of soils.
Okay. Thank you. So the answers were very helpful. I would like to know just the nature of the limitation, though. You can only take so many trucks. Is this a legislative limitation? Is it an operational one?
Through your worship, it is primarily just an operational one. On a daily basis, we are prepared to take our customers bringing in garbage. This will be a rather large disruption, so we'll have to make some adjustments. We also have hours where we can be limited, and it sounds like this operation might be running well beyond what we're normally open for. So our goal will be to take in as much as possible. If we need to extend our hours, we will, but it is unlikely, based on this type of project, that we can bring in as many trucks as this company would like to deliver at one time.
Thank you, and finding of concern. We are an attractive proposition because we're closer and cheaper?
That is correct. Our price will be thirty-one dollars per ton. We are definitely closer, just that we have the limitations that we've been talking about right now that have been explored, but our goal will be to bring in as many of these trucks as possible.
Other speakers? Deputy Mayor Hubert?
Thank you very much. I guess I appreciate the work that's been done. I appreciate the clarity that's been brought. That's what we asked for when we sent this back. And I have to make a vote here based on the clarity and the answers that are in the report. I can't make a vote on the but for. We do not know the business case. This is a planning application based on our rules of planning. Yes, it's discretionary, but there's not been a history of when someone meets the criteria of us fiddling around with the formula. The staff have applied the formula. I don't know the but-for argument on this particular development. That's between the proponent, his bank, and his investors. But I have to say that one of the things that I find extremely frustrating is none of us around this table are construction project managers, and we're trying to manage their project in terms of they send it to this landfill or send it to that landfill. They are responsible for executing the project. We're responsible for ensuring that our policies in terms of the subsidy that's available is appropriately administered. So I guess I'd say to my colleagues and through you, Mr., with the greatest respect, let's let the developer's project manage one of the largest projects in downtown, and let's let them get on with it. And this subsidy conforms with our policy. It's good for downtown. It's good for employment in the city. It's going to make a significant impact, and let's be careful that when we speak here that we do not undercut the confidence of businesses that want to invest in downtown and want to invest in our city by entering into and bringing forward a certain uncertainty about what the behavior is going, or what the reception's going to be that they're going to receive around this council table.
I have Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to Counselor Helmer. Even though I didn't support the, his motion, I did appreciate the conversation that we had at Planning Committee. I even know the developer himself thought it was a healthy process that he had to undertake, come back to committee, explain what he was doing. I was satisfied with the explanation that he will try to use the London landfill, and hopefully we will receive receipts coming back under twenty-two million point seven, under that. I know there is this tendency to probably always cap it at two-point-seven, and that's where the receipts may lay, but I'm really hoping the developer will do his best to keep them down. So again, I just want to thank Counselor Helmer for that engagement and understanding the process as well.
Other speakers? Okay. I have no additional speakers. So why don't we deal with A separately? And that way, if it is defeated, there is an amendment that could be brought forward by Counselor Helmer. So we're dealing with A. Moved by... We're just waiting on, I think Ms. Westlake Power to bring it up on screen. Now we have just A up? Okay. So just A is up, Chair? Okay. So this is on A. It's been moved by Counselor Park. Any additional speakers? Okay. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries eleven to two.
And let's deal with the remainder of the motion. Any speakers? There are none. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries twelve to one.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor Park. And we'll now move to the fifth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. Counselor Turner?
Conflict?
Conflict, please. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. If I may just put on record my conflicts, I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting to register them. With respect to the, sorry, my screen scrolled there. The eighth report of the Planning and Environment Committee, my conflict was with respect to item four, and with respect to the fifth report of the Community and Protective Services, items eight and ten. All three of those items, my agency, the Middlesex London Health Unit, has involvement with a regulatory capacity.
Thank you, Counselor. So that's on record now. It's been recorded, and I will go to the acting chair, Counselor Usher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a great pleasure to chair this meeting. Lots of good things are coming out of it. I'd like to put all the items from one to sixteen, except if somebody has something to pull. I noticed Counselor Squire says that he would like to pull item number three. I would also like to be able to say a few comments on ten and eleven, and I really do have a question on eight.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to ask you to hang on a second. So at this point, what I heard is that we're going to deal with any three separately, eight and ten separately, the conflicts, and also...
Seven.
Seven and four?
Counselor Regley.
Seven and four, okay.
So did we say we are doing ten separately?
Yes. So there was a conflict declared on ten and eight.
Okay.
So just to summarize, we're going to deal with all items with the exception of four, seven, eight, and ten.
So, Mr. Chair, out of those, then, can I just say something about eleven? I want to make it clear that we need to understand this. We had a lot of speakers here for item number eleven, and it was mostly to do with, these are four licensing bylaws that we are talking about. Relatively simple, but the, one with the pet shop, I got the impression that a lot of people thought that we were dealing with a lot of other things, so they came to talk about snakes and fishes and so on, within their rights. And I do believe that it was good that they came, because my understanding is staff will be looking at those later on. But the focus of the pet shop licensing was really to do with cats and dogs. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I really do thank the people who came, particularly those who came specifically for cats and dogs.
Thank you. So if you could move that on screen, please. Counselor Usher, this is clause one through eighteen, excluding four, seven, eight, and ten. Moved by Counselor Usher. Any additional discussion, comments?
Just a second.
Please, go ahead.
I only have sixteen.
Let's take a look. I only have sixteen, too. Yeah?
So do I.
Clause one through affinity, infinity, rather, with the exception of four, seven, eight, and ten. We'll get that changed. Yeah.
So do I.
Clause 1 through affinity, infinity, rather, with the exception of 4, 7, 8, and 10. We'll get that changed. Let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 13 to 0.
I put item number four on the floor.
Okay, I'll start a speakers list for four. I believe this was, yeah, pulled by Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We had a full discussion on this matter at committee. I was satisfied with the discussion. I voted against it, and I just want to vote against it again with no expectation of persuading any of my colleagues to change their mind or anything, and I do this in anticipation of maybe shortening the meeting.
Take note, everyone. All right, thank you very much, Counselor Squire. And any other speakers? There are none. Okay, let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 1.
I put item number seven, Mr. Chair.
Item seven, short-term accommodations. Speakers?
Thank you. I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to watch the video, but I did review the original report, which I've pulled up on my screen, and I see that this was a receive-only report, and I, I'm confused. I'm confused because the report says that this was brought up in December, and there's actually not a report back and won't be for a number of months. So I was trying to understand what the purpose of this report coming back was, and I was hoping someone could clarify that for me.
Looking for the purpose of the report coming forward through this cycle of committees. George, you're looking great.
Through Your Worship, the purpose of the report is to provide background information on the status of the review that's being undertaken and to provide the committee with an indication that we're planning to come back in the third quarter this year to report and provide some more specific recommendations on dealing with the short-term accommodation matter.
Thank you. So in December, I don't remember specifically that we were looking at the short-term accommodations. So to me, it appeared that this was kind of being added to the scope of what we were looking at, different from the December meeting, and I was surprised that there was no input looked for from council as to whether or not we wanted to include this in the scope. I don't know that this is an area that I feel that we need to regulate or should be really looking at. So I recognize that a report's coming back, but I don't anticipate being supportive of that report coming back. I will certainly read it and be open to it, but I feel like this was a way to widen the scope of what we discussed in December and just kind of update council without looking for input on whether or not council or committee wanted staff to include this in the scope. So I'll leave my comments there, and I, I may even vote against this today. I don't think it really does anything. I mean, we're still receiving the report, but I see this as a way to broaden the scope of what we had directed back in December, so.
I have Counselor Cassidy. Any other speakers?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to address some of, some of the comments that Counselor Ridley made. I'm not sure if the, if part of the impetus of bringing this forward had anything to do with a situation in Ward 5, but I know that Mr. Kotolik had been contacted by a number of residents in Ward 5. There is a petition with about 40 people on it, and I did make the comment at committee that even though only two complaints have been received, one of those complaints was funneled through a single person, and it represented an entire street, an area. And part of the concern around whether or not to regulate, as we see the sharing economy growing, is there a need to regulate this kind of, this kind of industry in London? And I think there are potential for conflicts with older established residential neighborhoods when you see, so in this particular case, it's a house that's regularly rented out for weekend-long parties, and it's very disruptive to the neighborhood. And there, there has been an ongoing education process in the neighborhood about exactly what Airbnb and other types of, of businesses like that, what that actually means. So I, I believe that may have had something to do with staff bringing this forward, and I think it's necessary that we be proactive on this to see how, what kind of impacts this could have in, in neighborhoods in London.
Other speakers? I have, I'll go to you, Chair. Okay, I have Counselor Helmer, and then Morgan.
Thank you, and certainly when we had the discussion back in December, even at committee, really the focus is on the increases in the fees for rental licensing. That was primarily what we discussed at committee and then at council. I don't even know that it was discussed at council, and this was a kind of tag-on to the, to the staff recommendation to say, also come back with this report. And I think we didn't really have a full discussion about that issue either at committee or, or at council, like, so I understand where my colleague is coming from. I said this at committee, and I just want to repeat it because I certainly, I'm a user of Airbnb, and it saved me a lot of money, per se, traveling around. It saved the city of London a lot of money because I'm able to stay in accommodations that are a lot cheaper than hotels. It's also been a great way, frankly, of seeing some really cool heritage properties that have been redeveloped and repurposed as condos. In Winnipeg, I stayed in a heritage factory not too far from where our conference was happening. In Ottawa, for FCM, I'm going to be staying in a heritage home that's such a heritage home, it has like a name, you know, it has its own name. And it's just right around the corner from the Convention Centre. So, you know, I think we have to look at all of the different impacts of this kind of innovations. One of the things I hope we don't lose sight of is the benefits for consumers of having more choices about where they want to be staying, more affordable choices, the benefits for the people who are renting the properties out to have a little bit of extra income on the side. I think that there is some concern, and certainly you see in bigger cities like Toronto, Montreal, where, you know, entire units are just permanently dedicated to Airbnb, that's what that unit is for, and there's a contraction of the housing supply, and I think that there's some, some concerns there, especially when it comes to housing affordability in these big cities. But I don't want to go too far down the road to, to regulate it too tightly, and especially when we're talking about taxing things differently, and, you know, there's a lot of options there. So I have a bit of skepticism. I'm interested to know what the report is going to say. I'm glad to see that Airbnb, at least for itself, there's other providers, obviously, who work in the space, has been open in talking to us about what their operations are like in London, and my understanding is that they've been easier for regulators to work with than, say, some other companies who remain nameless in other areas. So I'm looking forward to the discussion. I know that Mr. Kotolik committed that he would try and engage with the consumers and try and reach those people. It's obviously a diverse group. A lot of them are tourists, so it's difficult to engage them in a discussion around regulation here in the city of London. I look forward to seeing the report coming forward, but I do think we have to really keep all these different benefits and potential drawbacks in mind when we're talking about moving in this regulatory way.
Counselor Morgan, anyone else?
Thank you, Your Worship. My, my question is on the, the way that this work will be done, because this is one of those ones that has a number of different departments involved. It says in the report that the municipal law enforcement services, with the support of a number of city departments, so it's going to be led by enforcement, but finance, planning, fire prevention, tourism are all going to be involved. And I just want to make sure that, and I don't know if it came up at the committee discussion because of the timing of the budget, I expect it, it may not have, is that in the, in the budget, the, the, the budget also allowed for municipalities to possibly institute a hotel tax. And when the Finance Minister was challenged on that, about whether that would include Airbnb, the answer was that would be up to individual municipalities. So when this report now says rental licensing bylaws and taxation, I think we're going to make a lot of people really nervous about hotel taxes and Airbnb taxes if we're not really clear about this. So although I think it makes sense that this is a collaborative effort, I think if we're going to get into the taxation, I certainly want to make sure that, you know, that this is done in a way that is comprehensive, because that has obviously significant impacts from an economic perspective. So this is one of those ones that lands at Community and Protective Services Committee, but it includes taxation, and I just want to make sure that we get this in the right spot, given some of the potential changes that happened in the Ontario budget, given the possibility for, for new taxation, because it's listed in this report. So I don't know if staff can comment that, given the new context that we're maybe considering this report under, and whether that there's a different approach that staff might take to, to leading and developing this particular item moving forward.
I'm going to go to the, to the Acting Chair, and then Mr. Hayward looked like he had a treasure twinkle in his eye.
If Mr. Hayward will address it, I'll, I'll do that afterwards.
Mr. Hayward, welcome home.
Thank you, Your Worship. So with respect to this hotel tax that was mentioned, I understand there was a little bit of consternation that was raised. I do have an email. I don't have it handy at the moment, but it really spoke to, I think there was some misunderstandings relating to it. Certainly, as we go forward on this, we will, we would incorporate anything in that we need to, so I'll loop in with the appropriate people to make sure that we undertake a necessary review. Right now, I think there, there is maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding over what was published with the budget.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I don't think for me, two complaints is enough to set staff on a work program to address, address the problem. I think that, I don't, I don't know about that wording, but that, that seems like a lot more than I need to be done at, at this point, maybe a little more. Perhaps, and I think we heard a little bit about it, but I, I could have staff through the Chair describe these nuisances and specifically what they are and how we would deal with those if it were at a place other than a rental.
Mr. Grayway?
Through Your Worship, one of the nuisances that was identified was noise in, in neighborhoods. Not sure the extent to which that might or might not be a nuisance, but that's one of the things that would be looked at, along with other potential impacts of the short-term accommodation. I don't think that we have any predetermined ideas as to what would be or wouldn't be regulated, but that's something that would be coming out in the, in the options that are put forward in the report.
All right, so, well, then perhaps I just, just continue to ask, there's been some noise. So how would we, how did we deal with it? If somebody makes a complaint, how would we deal with it now with, without, without trying to legislate something else? I, I don't want us to do more and more bylaws on, on everything at every, at, at the behest of every complaint. So is, can you, can you tell me how, how we would normally deal with that, those noise complaints? And did we deal with those noise complaints when people made them?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to the specifics of the complaints, but it may be that the noise complaints can be addressed through existing noise bylaw, and those are the types of things that would be coming out in the report, and we'd be able to determine whether or not there, there may or may not be a need for additional regulation that, that could be brought forward.
Okay, thank you. Then perhaps through the Chair, you just tell me the difference between, I, I don't like the wording "work program" to address the short-term problems. That seems like we're asking you to do much more than, or giving you license to do much more work than, than I would really want you to do, because I see us having a lot of important things to do, and this may not be one of them if we can just send somebody to deal with a noise complaint.
If you take a look at the motion that's before you, Counselor, you'll see that, that there's a report that's being received through committee and council, and then the it being noted isn't really providing any kind of direction to staff, it's just indicating that council is noting or acknowledging that some work will take place between now and some point in the foreseeable future to produce a report that would come back, providing us with options in the area of rental licensing and zoning bylaws and taxation. So this isn't direction, per se, it's staff indicating this is the path that they're on, and here's, here's a report indicating it, and there, there's a subsequent report with more information that will be coming forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, it doesn't seem to say that they're just going to come back with another, a further report, but that they're deciding to go forward on, to create bylaws to deal with, with housing, and I, I don't, I don't know that I want them to do that. And, and so would I have to make a motion to prevent that from happening?
Yeah, simply by the way this is worded, as it's coming through your committee Acting Chair, this is an FYI, and so if you wanted to provide direction, we could deal with this, even if it's defeated, we'd need to have a subsequent motion come forward to provide additional direction.
Okay. Well, I don't know that there's a hurry. I'm sure I can look further into it and provide additional direction at another time.
I think that an excellent idea, you could bring it forward to the next round of committees if, if you choose. Any other speakers? Okay, let's...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the discussion. I, I think that we have to be careful that we don't try to foresee what Mr. Kotolik is going to come forward. I got the impression that he's going to come back to us. Maybe work program, it might be an endeavor, it might be whatever it is, but he's going, he identified that he was coming back to us. And I think that Counselor Cassidy put it well, exactly what happened. He's going to look at this situation, wherever they are, it's a range of options that he said he's going to come back with. I'm sure that he's got it in his mind exactly how broad he's going to take this, and at that time, we can add more or can remove some, so. But like you said, it was just a report to receive, knowing that more will be coming.
Thank you. So that's been well summed up by the Acting Chair. Any additional speakers? There are none, so let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 1.
Put number, I'll put number eight on the floor.
I believe there's a conflict declared on eight. I think we deal with eight and 10 likely at the same time.
Well, I have a question, a couple of questions with eight.
Go for it.
Perhaps I'm going to ask Mr. Hayward. One of the items in C, it talks about T1, raising tobacco excise taxes. First of all, it says that the mayor be directed to write to the Ontario Minister of Finance to request that consideration be given. Now, you know that this was done before the budget, and it talks about raising tobacco excise taxes by at least $10 per carton. If I remember rightly, that is in the budget, the new provincial budget, over a number of years. I think we're going to start with $2, but however, it's just, the price of it will be raised. So I want to ask through you, ask Mr. Hayward, if that raising of the, and perhaps maybe even Counselor Helmer from their discussion at the Health Department, is that raising of the price of tobacco different from this raising tobacco excise taxes by at least $10? Because I don't think that they're one and the same, but the dollar figure, and I think that the intent is the same, and I just want to be sure. I don't want us to look silly when we write a letter of this nature when they just said something in the budget.
Mr. Hayward, I just mouthed to me, "I don't know." And so, Mr. Hayward, I'll, I'll give you the microphone if you want to elaborate on that, or is that about it? This is something that you can't answer tonight? So it, it, we do have the Chair of the Health Unit, who I think can speak to this.
Yeah, so the Health Units across the province have been pushing for this for a long time, and it was successful. That is what's in the budget, and it's not necessary to ask for this anymore. They've done what we're asking for, which is great. So that lasted a bit, about the $10 per carton, that's in the budget now.
The, the raising, we are asking for this $10 on excise taxes over and above, because this is...
So I have a suggestion. Okay. So my suggestion would be that we amend the recommendation to raise tobacco excise taxes by at least $10 a carton to, just direction to me, to commend the government for doing that, and I think we're all set. So, so thank, commend, acknowledge that they've done what we were going to ask them to do. Sound good?
And, and that's okay with me. I just, like I said, I just don't want us to look silly that we're asking for something that they just did, so if we want to amend that.
Technically speaking, it is, it is contrary, and so I'm going to deal with C1 separately, and we'll just change the language on that. So I'd ask colleagues, based on the comments that Counselor Usher's brought forward, to defeat C1, and then we can come up with a new C1. Counselor Helmer? Okay. Okay, so let's deal with C1 separately. So if you would, move that just to get it on the floor, Acting Chair. Okay, so we'll deal with C1. Okay, so we'll deal with C1, any further discussion? We're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, 2 to 10 with one recuse.
You sold, that's Counselor Usher. Okay, and then an amendment, if we just have some language that says "thank." And we'll deal with now the second part of C, C2, which is what the Health Unit was asking us to do. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes, thank you. Is the amendment required? Can we just send the letter as it is? We could just send the letter with that direction. I, well, I suppose. I don't know how, it seems to me in a way that somewhat cross-purpose is if they're worried about something being contraband, and then they increase the price of it, that would just make it more likely, so I don't know if that's, maybe that's a workable strategy, I don't know what's commendable.
Let's deal with C2, and then we'll circle back to see if anybody wants to bring forward a recommendation for a new C1. So, C2 has been moved by the Chair. If you can move that, please, Counselor Usher. Okay. And any further discussion? Let's call the question. We're voting. And, oh, we'll report out on that vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 with one recuse.
And Counselor Usher, did you want to bring forward some amended language, or just leave it at that? So this would be, if you wanted to bring forward language that thanked the government for raising the cost by $10.
I guess that wouldn't hurt to just to let them know that we did consider this.
I'll look to Ms. Westlake Power, are you drafting something? I'll take that as a yes. Just while that's coming up, any additional discussion on this item? Please, go ahead.
I just think that the word "excise taxes" is the one that troubles me, then. Can we just say "thank them for raising the price of tobacco"?
It's your motion.
Yeah. I don't think it's taxation that was, I think it's just the price of a carton of cigarette.
It was, go ahead.
It is very explicitly taxes on tobacco.
And I will, it doesn't say "thank you" here, but I'm going to say "thank you" in my letter, I guarantee it. Okay, if you want to make that motion, please. Moved by Counselor Usher, any further discussion? Seconded by Counselor Helmer, let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 with one recuse.
Do the remainder, then. Moved by Counselor Usher, any further discussion? There is none, let's call the question. We're voting. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 with one recuse.
I'll put 10 on the floor.
Thank you. Any discussion on 10? There was a conflict called. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay, at Committee, we had a number of, quite a number of people come out and speak about their concerns with our open air burn bylaw. I think they made some very valid points, and I spoke at Committee about the fact that London is one of the very few municipalities that allows backyard fires. I think we've seen how society has evolved over time with secondhand smoke, and a number of the speakers that came to Committee last week did speak about secondhand smoke, and how provincial laws changed to protect people from breathing cigarette smoke from smokers. I also believe, it's my understanding, that the Fire Department doesn't necessarily support this bylaw that we have. They don't think that the city should have a bylaw that allows people to have backyard fires. You know, so at the risk of being very unpopular with many people in my ward who back onto Stony Creek and like to have their backyard fires, I think that we should take a second look at this, I think we should refer this back to staff, and I think we should do further consultation with health experts and with the London Fire Department to see if really we should be having this bylaw the way it's written on the books.
Okay, I have Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the sentiments of the Counselor, but I just want to point out the following, we considered this entire matter just over a year ago, I mean, just over a year ago. We had a full public participation meeting, complete public participation meeting. We also heard from the Health Unit, who made it clear that because of the dissipate, although they appreciate the harmful effects of this, because of the dissipation that occurs with outdoor fires, that they did not consider it a public health risk. They came again to the meeting last week and indicated they had not changed their position with regard to this matter being a public health risk. That is their position. I appreciate the sentiments about this, I understand it, but if we were to re-debate and redo everything we've done, just after a year, and go through the whole process again, when we do not have any new information at all, I don't think that's productive from our point of view. Let's stick with the decision we made. Otherwise, we're going to end up with people coming back and saying, "Oh, the year's up, let's do it again, let's do it again, let's go through it again." So if there was some new information that we were going to hear, I'd be fine with that. But I also have to point out, and I pointed this out at the meeting, that we heard from six people at this meeting, six people, and we are a city of 400,000 people, and I fully appreciate certainly that in my ward, there's absolutely no appetite for this. Two people have actually contacted me, a lady contacted me this week, to deal with situations where people weren't handling their fires properly, and the Fire Department did take care of that. So this is why this decision was made, and I don't think anyone was taking the situation lightly. I take it very seriously. Certainly in my neighborhood, we take it seriously and make sure that we're very responsible for fires. So I'm urging you to support the decision of the Committee.
Any other speakers on this burning issue? Counselor Usher?
So, Mr. Chair, we heard really from six people through five mouths, because one of them was absent. This is a situation where we hear from people every now and then, and there are people who are very concerned about it. Unfortunately, we don't hear from enough people. This was not a public participation meeting, these five people asked to come here to address this matter, and we allowed them to come. We listened to them, we spoke to staff, we spoke to the Fire Chief, and at this point in time, we decided to take this action, because this bylaw has been in place now for about 10 years, I believe, and when it was first put in place, we had a massive public participation meeting in here, and every time it comes up, we talk about it again, and what we do sometimes, we streamline it. What we need to do sometimes, and what we talk about each of the time, is how we can give additional enforcement to the situation. So at this point in time, this is what we, the Committee, decided to accept it this way, and to just note it, and not do anything at this point in time. So that's what you're voting on.
Other speakers? Okay, let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 10 to 2.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's move then to the 14th Report of Corporate Services Committee, Deputy Mayor Hubert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 14th Report, I'll put the entire report on, we had a very, I think, a very fruitful discussion with our MPPs, we appreciated that they were here with us, all of them made the effort, and certainly I got positive feedback from them on the conversation.
Any speakers? I beg your pardon, Counselor Usher?
I was just asking if we can do 14 and 15 together.
Do you want to move 15 as well? Okay.
Certainly I can move the 15th Report, it was the afternoon session with the MPs, and likewise, a good discussion with them. I think there's a real desire here with other levels of government, for us to work collaboratively, to be on the same page together on major projects that affect the city.
Okay, so 14 and 15, any discussion? Let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now to the 17th Report of Corporate Services Committee. You'll note on your desk this evening, there is two amendments, Clause 2 and Clause 3, and we don't have the bylaw tonight, because we're slightly ahead of the provincial government on certain things, and so there are two amendments, and I look to the clause, to the clerk, can we, I don't know if anyone wants to speak to these separately, because I'll put the whole report on with the amendments, or do I need to do each clause separately? Same amendment?
I would do Clause 2 separately.
Okay, we'll do Clause 2 separately, I'll put the First Amendment on.
Okay, that should be up in a moment. Any speakers? Yeah, Counselor Ridley? If you can move that, please, Deputy Mayor.
I don't have a microphone. Thank you, everyone likes to keep the buttons pushed on these sometimes, and not specific to the report, but while it was coming up, I thought I would perhaps ask if someone could help me to understand if there was a 16th meeting and report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Mr. Mayor, that was the report from our special meeting on Saturday regarding the rate ballot, so it was attached to yesterday's special meeting at Council.
Can you move that, please, Deputy Mayor? Any others, any speakers on the amendment? That's been moved and seconded, let's call the question. We're voting.
Counselor Van Holst and Counselor Squire? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 to 0.
Okay, and I'll, Clause 2 as amended, I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any speakers? Let's call the question. Oh, speaker? Yes, Counselor Helmer.
Thank you, I'm glad to see that we're closing the gap between the residential and the multi-unit residential rate, bringing the ratio down to 1.847. Colleagues, we're called back in 2015, I suggested we bring it down to around this level in 2015, and it's taken us until 2017 to get there, but I'm glad that we are getting there, and I hope we can continue to make progress every year, till we get to the point where these condo conversions stop happening, and we've reached an equilibrium in the market where the tax rate's fair for all kinds of residential housing in the City of London.
Other speakers? Okay, let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
And I'll put item number 3 on the floor, and as soon as it's on, I'll put the amendment time as well.
Let's call the question. It's on screen, we're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
And now as amended.
Speakers? There are none, let's call the question. If we can open that vote, please. We're voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
And finally, the balance of the report, Mr. Mayor.
Any speakers? It'll be up on screen in a moment. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Hubert, there are no speakers, let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Okay, see if it works. This is the eighth report.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, I'm happy to put at this point all of the report on the floor. We've approved about $25 million worth of projects that I think citizens will be very happy with once they're completed.
Okay, thank you. So the, any to be dealt with separately? No, we'll deal with all the clauses at once. Deputy Mayor Hubert?
I just want to note and send my congratulations to the Engineering Department, because I've once again started to get complaints that everywhere they go in the city, there's construction, so it must be that time of year again.
Counselor Hopkins, Turner?
Yes, I'd like to just make a comment on number nine, and I want to thank Counselor Helmer for passing on an email regarding the, what's happening with the phosphorus and the, on Lake Erie, and what's happening south of the border. I know there has been some concerns about south of the border putting in, the government's putting in money there, and I was happy to receive Counselor Helmer's email saying that two senators in Ohio have supported increasing, I think up to $300 million, to clean up Lake Erie, so I was really happy to hear that. Just wanted to make that comment, because I want to thank staff and for the work that they're doing to make sure that we can meet the requirements of the province, reducing by 40%. So just wanted to make that comment.
Other speakers? Counselor Turner and then Usher.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just with respect to the patio design guidelines for on-street municipal parking spaces, just to... municipal parking spaces, just as a point of clarification, I, I see that it is being forwarded to the urban design guidelines, the citywide urban design guidelines. I'm trying to remember our conversations before, if, if Patio Designs for on-street municipal parking spaces was limited to the downtown area, or if this is intent indeed to go citywide.
Through you, Worship. Unfortunately, I don't know that answer. It is one that I can definitely get back to you. I don't know how far this program is going to extend. Currently, it is primarily in the downtown core area, out to Old East Village, but as far as other, I would have to get back to you on that.
Can we get you an email later today or tomorrow? Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I recognize there are some opportunities in Wortley, for example, but, and that we have had the discussion before, but just didn't have the context in the report. Thank you.
Council Usher?
Okay, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate everyone, staff, and the council for the extension to Bradley Avenue. I know it's not in my ward. It is currently in Counselor Anna's ward, and it will be in, in Counselor Ridley's ward after the next election. However, a lot of people in all our wards have been asking for this for a long, long time. I do realize we're still going to have that big patch between White Oaks and Warren Cliff, and that's not coming until about 2022. But this is a big improvement for getting across the city when we're going to have Bradley Avenue extension. So I want to congratulate all of us for getting ahead with this, and thank the staff.
I want to caution a counselor, because he said currently not in his ward, so he may have plans for expansion. You never know. Thank you for bringing that, that comment forward. Any other speakers? There are none. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, let's move then to fourth report of Audit Committee. Deputy Mayor Hubert?
Put the report on the floor, Mayor.
It's coming up on the floor. I'll start the speakers list. We'll start Ward 1, work our way around. No? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Hubert. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Oh, can you move that, please, Deputy Mayor Hubert? Thank you. Open up that vote, please. We're voting. Do you want to do the 14th? I'm sorry. Do you want to do the next one, the added as well? It's just 14th Report of Council, closed session.
Council Morgan? Closing the vote and motion carries, 13 to 0.
I'm happy to report that the added report of the 14th public report in closed session that we made progress on two matters.
Thank you. So that's coming up on screen in a moment. That's moved by Deputy Mayor Hubert. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Okay, colleagues, we're moving right along. We have deferred matters, and there are none. Enquiries? There are none. Emergent motions? I see no emergent motions. So we'll move into bylaws. Any of these bylaws need to be called separately due to conflict? No? Okay, so we'll have the bylaws brought forward up on screen for first reading.
Do you want to do the added? Yes. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make council and the public aware, there are added bylaws Bill Number 19798, 199, 200, 201, and 202, and all related to that, the tax policies that were approved earlier during the Corporate Services Report.
So, up on screen in a moment. There they are. This is first reading. Moved by Council Van Holst, seconded by Council Armstrong. Let's call the question. Voting.
Yes, Council Helmer? Um, sorry for the interruption. Did we not just amend the 17th Report, Clause 2 and 3, to say we're going to deal with these bylaws at a future meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There are a number of bylaws related to all of the clauses contained, so it's, those are the ones that were approved, not the ones that were amended.
Okay, so if you haven't voted, please do.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Second reading will be up on screen in a moment. Any speakers? Discussion, debate. That's been moved by Council Turner and seconded by Council Hopkins. There are no speakers, so I'm going to call the question. We are voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Okay, third reading, up on screen in a minute. Moved by Council Turner, seconded by Council Hopkins. I'll call the question. Voting.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 0.
Okay, colleagues, that brings us to the end of our meeting. I want to thank you very much for an efficient meeting tonight. I know this is number two of, of three this week, and I think we're going to have a long one tomorrow night. So it's good to have an early finish tonight, so we can prepare ourselves for Wednesday. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Council Helmer, seconded by Council Van Holst. Any discussion? Let's call the question. See you all tomorrow.